All right, good evening and welcome to our regular scheduled business meeting. We're going to have, and it was not scheduled or planned, but I'm gonna ask if Dr. Braddy will come and do the invocation for us.
Oh, we don't.
Because I don't have anything here.
Excuse me.
Where? Who? Bishop Dukes?
No.
Who?
Reverend Reynolds.
We can have a lot of prayer here tonight.
We got about three pastors in here.
Christian Fellowship Baptist Church, College Park.
Okay, well, Commissioner just said Reverend Reynolds, if you would. I apologize, I didn't have the forms. We'll have Reverend Reynolds to give us the invocation, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me.
Let us bow our heads. Our Father in Heaven, we come this evening with thankful hearts, thankful minds, thankful for life and strength, goodness, grace, love, and mercy. And our Father, as we come together, we pray for the very world in which we live in. We pray for the United States of America. We pray for the leaders of the world. We pray for our President, pray for the state of Georgia, and in particularly, this what we call Clayton County, where we reside. We ask your blessings upon our thoughts, upon our actions. We ask that you would continue to keep your hand of guidance as our community comes together to make decisions on what is best for your people. We ask that you would impart your wisdom, impart your will. We pray that your will be done here in Clayton County, as it is done in heaven. We thank you, dear Lord, once again, and we ask your mercy and your blessings to rest, to rule, and to abide in each of us as we live our lives. It is in your precious name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the September 17th Regular Commissioners Business Meeting. Our first order of business today is adoption of the agenda. Do any commissioners have any amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item number three I would like to have removed to the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye. Item number seven to the regular agenda? I'm sorry.
Those opposed, it's unanimous, next.
I'm sorry, yes, sir. Item number seven, move to the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, next.
And items eight and nine, move to the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
And item, I got one more. Item eighteen to the regular agenda.
Which one? What number?
Eighteen.
Okay. Had to read my notes.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. I would also like to add to the agenda, we have the grassroots leadership class here today, just to acknowledge them up front and present them with proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Any others?
Uh, yes. I would like to have number fifteen, Resolution 2019-112A. Number seventeen. And I believe you already said eighteen, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Number fifteen, number seventeen.
You want what?
Uh, move to the regular agenda.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. All right, hearing none, accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
Um, motion to adopt agenda with, is that a minute?
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our first item is a proclamation to Stanley Skandret. Commissioner Warner would like to congratulate Mr. Skandret for thirty-one years of service at Clayton County Public Schools.
Clayton County honors Stanley Skandret for thirty-one years of devotion to the children of Clayton County Public Schools, September 17th, 2019. Whereas the history of Stanley Skandret with Clayton County Public Schools began before he actually became an employee. His mother, Annie Ruth Skandret, worked in the cafeteria at Jonesboro High School for forty-five years and drove a school bus for the district for thirty-eight and a half years. And whereas Mr. Stanley graduated from Jonesboro High School in 1978 and promised himself with the guidance from God and a strong work ethic, he would obtain his personal and career goals. He knew the knowledge he possessed in building, construction, and landscaping would be of great value to an organization. And whereas he started his career with Clayton County Public Schools on May 1st, 1989, Mr. Stanley started as a trainee in the maintenance buildings ground department. He made steady advancement, obtaining titles of parapro two, mechanic one, and mechanic three. And whereas in March of 2003, he became the African-American supervisor in the history of the Clayton County Public Schools Maintenance Department. Mr. Stanley made history again in May of 2011 by becoming the first African-American coordinating supervisor in department history. And whereas Mr. Stanley has been a trailblazer within the district while holding steadfast to his faith in God, his love for his family, and thirty-one years of devotion to the children of Clayton County Public Schools, now therefore I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join us as we celebrate Stanley Skandret's thirty-one years of devotion to the children of Clayton County Public Schools. In witness thereof, I have here unto, set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventeenth day of September in the year 2019.
Thank you all. Come on, come on. This is a third-generation servant in our community, and I didn't expect it to start that soon, forgive me, but I wanted to take a minute and help you understand, not just because of what you saw read there, but a couple of weeks, about a couple of weeks ago, we honored Mr. Skandret upon his retirement, and the school system honored him with the dedication of the building. And so during that event, it happened so quickly that the municipalities, as well as the county government, were petitioned by the school system to join in an amazing celebration, as his entire family has served our community. And so that's why we came here today to do this. So thank you for serving our students in Clayton County, not just Clayton County School, but all of our children. Thank you so much.
All right, this time I'd like the grassroots leadership. Please come forward. Those participants.
Institute. Whereas the Grassroots Leadership Institute is the oldest sustained community program of its type in Clayton County, the mission of the Grassroots Leadership Institute is to identify, train, and nurture emerging leaders to better serve the needs of the Clayton County community. And whereas among the core values of the institute are appreciation and respect for the diversity of the Clayton County community, and commitment to seeking common ground and pursuing common goals, and affirmation that creating and maintaining community is a responsibility of every individual, and recognition of the mutual interdependence of all communities in Clayton, and recognition that involvement by and collaboration among the businesses, government, nonprofit, and religious sectors are essential to the welfare of our community. And whereas the Grassroots Leadership Institute is an organization of excellence that builds leadership in Clayton County by providing opportunities to establish personal relationships built on mutual trust and respect among leaders from diverse constituencies, and providing information and insights into the major issues and opportunities facing the Clayton County area, and providing a forum for candid and honest discussion of important issues, for hearing different perspectives and opinions, and enabling the creation of new ideas and initiatives to address Clayton County's major challenges, and linking its members to new and existing initiatives that address important community needs. And whereas the core of Grassroots Leadership Institute programming is their signature three-month executive-level series.
The 2019 Grassroots Leadership Class members are Evelyn Bryant, Deirdre Bernie Butler, Jentara Rump Carter, Alfred Dixon, Cameron Dixon, Kendra Finn, Charmaine Godley, Errol Hart, Elena Reeves, Lorna Reeves, Juana Smith, Frances Villarreal, Nan Walker, and Nari Williams. Please let's congratulate the 2019 Grassroots Leadership Class.
Next, we will have public comments. The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Oralitha Ensley.
Good evening, Chairman Turner and Commissioners. My name is Oralitha Ensley, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. I have three questions for you. Hopefully you will answer them, if you deem it appropriate. Number one, what happened with the third-party audit against the Ethics Board? Number two, will there be consequences taken against the three Commissioners named in the complaint? And my third question, I just want to ask, address to Mrs. Gregory. In the email you sent to the seven members of the Ethics Board on September the 12th, five days ago, please explain your inquiry. Is the Ethics Board being used as a political prop? Didn't understand it, just wanted to know, could you explain it?
I can talk to you later.
Anyway.
Okay, so you got your answer on that, and in reference to the first one, the audit was done and was published. It was, I'm trying to think of, I'm not gonna paraphrase it, because I don't wanna misquote what the audit said.
Mm-hmm.
It is open and available for open record, so I encourage you to get a copy of it. The second question was what?
Will there be consequences?
There is no provision in the Code of Ethics that allows us to provide a disciplinary action to Commissioners or other elected officials. That's something we're gonna have to look at.
And Chairman, you gotta clarify now, there was, the audit said that there was no wrongdoing. Done, okay. So there would never, there would not be.
Well, I didn't wanna paraphrase what it stated.
Yes.
If there, I mean, if you wanna bring it and read it out in public form, then that'd be your option. But yes, there was no wrongdoing. There was, if I remember correctly now, violation of the, our ordinance, but it wasn't unethical violation.
Okay.
The audit made recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
The audit made recommendations to whatever complaint that the Ethics Committee thought they had. But like, once again, I reemphasize, there was no wrongdoing.
You broke your ordinance, but that was wrongdoing.
Get a copy of it, please.
Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
My comments tonight are gonna be very brief. I am speaking directly about the IGA that was moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. As a taxpayer and as a seventy-two-year resident of Clayton County, I'm in strong support of Resolution 2019-115, and I would hope, I would pray, that the vote be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alvin Farmer.
Mr. Farmer, unincorporate Clayton County. First of all, to some of the citizens, in my evaluation of them are doing a great job. Mr. Keith over at the Aquatic Center, which I inform you, I go there a whole lot. That gentleman reminds me of what the Air Force told us, to act like it is your facility and do so. That gentleman is doing a great job. Also doing a great job at the Aquatic Center at their front desk, a lady named Miss Monica. Every time I come there, she's nice, friendly, and courteous, and just exceptional. Those two people need to be recommended, do whatever y'all need to do, give them proclamation, but they doing a great job. That stall that I informed you at the Aquatic Center was fixed, I think, day before yesterday. I happened to be leaving when the gentleman came there fixed. He said he just got the message five minutes ago to come over there and fix that metal that was sticking out, cause it was a safety hazard. I informed you before, you have a communication problem in your organization. I've been talking to you this a few months now. The house in my subdivision is finally tore down. I think it took a year for them to do that and everything, and I stayed on this and finally looked, nor did I get a call to say it was done. I happened to stop by there one day, and it was removed. The people at Griswell, exceptional besides your assistant manager, those people over there are doing an outstanding job. You need to do what you need to do, give them their, they spoke to me about the holiday fee, pay and everything like that, you need to do that for them. Coming out of the Aquatic Center, I go quite bit, that bus stop has not been, still not been removed. I almost got hit by a Cadillac SUV the other day coming out. Nor is Ark heading, heading towards here, you still have not turned, made that right-hand turn signal on that. You just proclaimed a gentleman for thirty-one years of service in the schools, and I applaud that too. But for those of you who do not know, according to Governor's report, and I just looked at it recently, our grade is still rated a D, and we're paying our superintendent, which the number I heard was $380,000 a year. So suppose he got an A, how much money would we pay him? The curb at Griswell, speeding need to be done at the area where you go into the dining facility. I brought this up, because I happened to be standing there as a lady a lot older than me, before she could did that, she stopped at that curb and had to take a break to walk across the curb. So this need to be a priority on this. I've been, you told me, and I've been bringing up recycling, you informed me to go find information. I did that, brung it to you. I told you to talk to Orange County, they got them the greatest recycling centers do in the United States Air Force, I can't speak another word to the service, they did that. But I don't see a recycling bin at this building, which is your headquarters. Fire station number six, I need to know when that's open, and I wanna come and inspect it myself. The CFO, she need to look at her parking, because she's parked pretty bad outside.
Your time is up, sir. Your time is up, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, not to, I do wanna address two things, in all fairness. I personally apologize to you about that bus stop I have on record, where unfortunately I must state it, I've asked for a very long time for it to be mitigated with MARTA, as well as through us. It calls for us to be able to have a conversation with them and then confirm with whoever else I was told they need to confirm with, but it is being done. I just want you to know that. But that wasn't brought up for the first time, so I will say thank you for bringing it back up, because I do have emails that show, I've been working on that for probably over a year now. The other thing is the fire station number six, if I'm not mistaken, that's the one right there on Panhandle Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the one you're speaking? That's another one I've been working on, they've been, I've been told they're working on it. It's not quite ready yet, and I too need it to be done, because that is my fire station. So as your Commissioner, I want you to know that I am trying my best to make sure we get it done. We do have to rely on those that are in charge to handle those matters, and that's the directors, okay?
That's all well and good.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, let me say this, please, let me say this.
Go ahead.
That bus stop is a safety hazard.
Yes, sir.
You asked MARTA.
Yes.
You did wrong, you should've told them, cause anybody get done, I told them to move it, and I'm gonna keep on telling them.
It was on.
So you, I told.
Mr. Farmer, there's a process with everything that we do. We are working on it.
The process is too slow, sir.
Sir. I concur with you, sir.
Process is government, there is government.
Well, you tell me who I need to talk to.
Hold on, let me finish, okay? And then I'm gonna be finished. There's a process, it's getting done, we're going to move it to the backside of the parking lot, you'll be pleased. So thank you, sir.
I need to know when.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Christopher Gallagher, Clayton County. I know there was some talk about this Southwest International Center, about putting it in a Boys and Girls Club, and I think it would be a great idea. Today with all the gangs and the drugs and, you know, a lot of single parents, parents working two jobs, not being there for the kids there, you know, it teaches them self-esteem there, helps them after-school programs there, teen pregnancy, and they expect in their program, kids attend, ninety-seven percent of the kids to graduate from high school, eighty-eight percent of the kids to go on to some secondary education there, and I think we have somewhere where they can go, you know, feel safe there, you know, be able to experience, learn the values that we need to teach young kids today. We have to catch them early before the gangs do, and they get in trouble there, and I just think that a Boys and Girls Club would be a good asset and a value for our young people, and they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Matt Miley.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Miley, I just wrote Matt short, and I'm a resident of Clayton County, Fayetteville. And I'm just here to do an amen to what Chris just talked about, and that is the Girl and Boys Club. We hope you could, we don't know what plans you have for that building completely, I'm sure, but what we want, what we would like to see would be a Boys and Girls Club in that facility. And I think it would be an asset to Saint, to, so I'm sorry, I started to say St. Louis, that's where I'm from. I'm sure it would be an asset to Clayton County. And another thing do I'd like to mention is that Chris and I, and our Commissioner, we run the Neighborhood Watch in Rivers Edge, and we've got a Neighborhood Watch that is the best. And I, and I think every, our Commissioner knows it, and I just wanted to say that, if anybody needed any help with their Neighborhood Watch, they can call us and we'll show them how to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unelected citizen of DC Three. I am, I'm finally happy after nine months that we are addressing this IGA agreement, which was fraudulently put together, but in this synopsis, I am very, very concerned about the structure moving forward, and I'd like to commend Mr. Davis for coming to a few meetings to, to really look at the dysfunction that has been occurring over the last two years. Now, determination is not very clear. We have $3.9 million of tax allocation money, we have $4 million that you requested from the Rainwood Apartments, we have $685,000 that pays for the employees over there, the four employees that comes out of the hotel tax, motel tax. And I'm very, very concerned that Mr. Ednison, former Commissioner, sued to be back on this Board, and the Development Authority paid his legal fees of almost $8,000. When Mrs. Helen Miss Swaim requested for her legal fees to be paid, they said they not do so, and I understand that the county assisted her in her defense in that matter. So there's been a lot of issues that have been convoluted, dysfunctional. The business is ran so disrespectful, the members be eating while they are conducting business, I've never seen that done in the history of any governmental entity. So with the operational mechanism that's necessary to move forward with the county employees, will they come back under the auspices of the Board of Commissioners, or will they stay under the control of the Development Authority, which is dysfunctional and has no vision whatsoever, moving this county forward in the economic realm, that all of the citizens that I happen to converse with would like equality of life and like for us to move forward with a live here, work here, play here type of environment? So our economic development concept has been dysfunctional, and it is embarrassing. I personally know of a lot of businesses that we have lost because of the dysfunction and the inadequacy of certain Board members, especially the Chairman, Mr. Elgin Bell. I think that needs to be replaced. We thank him for his service through the years, however, I think there's need to be a new voice, a new vision moving forward. So I'm not quite clear in the synopsis if the employees will stay under the auspices of the Development Authority, will they come back under the control of the BLC? That's my question.
Thank you, sir. And just to answer your question, we have that, again, on the agenda to be discussed. First of all, we would have to terminate this Board, terminate the IGA, and then it would be my desire to work with the Development Authority Board to come up with an IGA that we can agree to. What that looks like, I couldn't tell you. Can't get ahead, can't put the cart in front of the horse, but tonight we're focusing on the IGA.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I wanted to kind of piggyback on what Ms. Ensley was talking about with the outside auditor's findings in regards to the review of the Ethics Board and the assumption that they did something wrong. I believe the Ethics Board are upholding a high standard with any complaint that comes before them, and the fact of the matter that they came up and released a statement was immediately followed up by, they did something wrong, we need to now investigate them. I know that in the Clayton News Daily, the outside auditor found that there was no violation of the county ethics rule based on how it is written today. But there was a recommendation made to add language that if a county ordinance is But there was a recommendation made to add language that if a county ordinance is violated, that that should be an ethics violation. So I would ask this board to consider adopting such language into the Ethics Board so that they can truly conduct themselves. At the end of the day, it piggybacks on what the Ethics Board Attorney had actually said was that the actions of three commissioners did disregard procedural rules established by themselves for governing commission meetings. And by them violating their own ordinance, they're basically given a false public perception. We expect our county residents to abide by our ordinances. Even when we have code enforcement come out, we will pre-warn residents, hey, we're going to do a run in your neighborhood. Please get your household in order so you're not in violation of county ordinances. And so for Commissioner Gregory, it was posted in the Clayton News Daily that she felt that Chairman Nix or myself might have had some sort of vendetta against her or Commissioner Hambrick, which when you look back at the December meeting, Chairman quoting your words, you said any commissioner, in my opinion, that would vote to allow this agenda item to remain would be in violation of our ordinance and their vote, in my opinion, would be unethical. But I see that she didn't have an issue with the chairman claiming that she was being unethical. But she had an issue with Chairman Nix and apparently the entire Ethics Board and myself as a citizen for holding our elected officials to a higher standard. I find it interesting, she quoted state law stating that it was a necessity for her to do this, to vote on that item, when all it was was a board appointment. And how many times has this board delayed an appointment to another board? So to me, it seemed more a necessity that Michael Emerson was leaving office than it was to upheld the county ordinance. Thank you.
Time is up, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Warner.
I think I'll hold it because there is, we need to discuss something.
Donald Melvin. Donald Melvin.
Good evening Chairman, to the Board of Commissioners, my name is Donald R. Melvin. I'm working over at the Riverdale Library. My question to you all today, working at the Riverdale Library, why does it take so long, so long to get change orders approved? And back to the contractor? You know, we put these change orders in in April and here it is September, soon be October, November. And when we started this job, we started somewhere in November. And it rained all the way through up until April. Hard to get work done when it's raining, especially when you're a site contractor and you do underground work as well. So these change orders is holding the project up from being completed. We got water lines to move and we got storm drain to put in. Can't put the storm drain in because the water line is in the way. And this has been requested since April for this work to be done. And I just can't keep picking up and moving and running, trying to find other work to keep my men busy. And then when they do approve them, I gotta stop working for somebody else to come back to try to finish that up. We need to get these things done so we can move on. This is a small job, but it's a big and pretty library. Small job and I say small money for me. But I need to get it done so we can move on. I need to get the change orders approved, I need y'all help. It's hard to keep food on the table for these men just working for me if I can't keep them working. So can I depend on you all to help me?
We definitely will check into it, sir. You make a valid point, so we will look into it.
Mr. Chair, I think we need to do a little bit more than look into it. If you don't mind me making a point, I would like for us to look into the fact that we request and get a lot of change orders approved quickly, even those that have proven not to work for us, including the IT system. So I'm going to ask that we later put on our next agenda for us to go through our audit process to find out why. Even the employee benefits, that's why I pulled it over, we can't make changes where we need to make changes, but we don't need to make, we're just, we gotta figure this out.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, when I say look into it, we need to find the impetus of what, what they slow, where the slowdown is or where the problem is originating from.
And Mr. Chair, not to go back and forth, the reason I'm saying that is because I don't want us to look at it just in isolation. We need to look at operations and how we're doing things. Certain things get pushed through and others just linger. And we take the heat as commissioners and I'm putting that on record because we gotta tighten up.
You have something else you want to say, I saw you come back to the podium.
And one of the other biggest problems is getting paid. It took four months just to get the contractor paid to pay me. I can't survive like that.
We'll, we'll check that as well, sir. You have a word on that.
I appreciate it, sir.
Nicole D. Lewis and I see Chris Murchison signed up also. Are y'all only need one to speak or, yes ma'am? Michelle Bohannon, it looks like.
I'm not sure because we came last month and about our plaque being.
Is this about zoning, ma'am?
Uh huh, zoning.
Is it something that's on the agenda for zoning or?
Yeah, it's, it's like, it's saying, it was recommended for denial last time, so.
We'll have a sep- separate hearing, public hearing for that, yes ma'am. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Our next item of business is the consent agenda and I'd like to read the numbers so I can make sure that I didn't miss any. There will be number one, two, four, five, six, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, and nineteen.
Any board member has anything that differs?
That's what she, that's what you're reading, right?
Those are the ones that you'll be approving on the consent agenda.
You said fourteen on the consent agenda?
Yes.
We need to amend that. Okay.
All right, we're good.
I have a question for Mr. Reed. Mr. Reed, before we adopt it.
Mr. Reed.
Item fourteen. If it's, if it goes through tonight, can we come back and add to it or amend item fourteen?
You can make amendments to your ordinance at any time, anytime.
Okay. No, that's what I was, you just told.
I thought that was the, one of the first ones that went on.
No, it was number, number three, number seven came off, number eight, number nine, eighteen, then it was fifteen and seventeen.
Okay, let's proceed. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move the second, any questions? Here and now, those favor I, I oppose, it's unanimous.
The first item is item number three, which is a recommendation for award RFP nineteen dash twenty-three Brokerage Services for Property and Casualty Insurance Annual Contract for Clayton County, Georgia.
Ms. Rogers.
Good afternoon Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Recommendation of award for RFP nineteen dash twenty-three, once again, this is for the Brokerage Services for Property and Casualty Insurance. It is an annual contract for Clayton County. The recommendation is to award to the responsive and responsible proponent who proposal meets our specifications. That is Edgewood Partners Insurance Center, brokers and consultants located in Duluth, Georgia. The negotiated amount is eight, eight, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and that's per year. Funding is available through the county's general fund. The valuation tabulation summary, department recommendation memo and agreement are attached for your review and information. My request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman, his designate, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the CFO to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions?
Who made the motion?
Commissioner Hamrick.
Just a statement that this is the same company that caused us to get sued over some decisions that were brought before this board of recommendations. Not only that, what concerns me, it was, it was, we'll receive a what is called an annul item. And also, these are the folks, same folks who do not show up to meetings at all when we have questions. And they both do our employee benefits as well as our property and casualty. And as a citizen first and an elected official, it's very difficult to award people for no service, for me.
Any other statements, comments, questions? Those in favor of I, I oppose.
Nay.
So I hear a four wanted passes.
Thank you.
The next item is number seven, which is Information Technology Additional Positions.
Good evening Chairman Turner, Board of Commissioners. On behalf of Information Technology Human Resources is requesting the following. Add one software architect, grade thirty-three, step one. Total compensation, one hundred three thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars. Add four software developers, grade twenty-nine, step one. Total compensation, eighty-six thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars each. For a total compensation of three hundred forty-five thousand, thirty-two dollars. These classify, these classifications are the proposed solution for the CGIS custom program. The proposed compensation aligns with likewise positions within our compensation system and does not create parity issues. The total cost of this request is four hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty dollars.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move the second, any questions?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Commissioner Davis.
What is CGIS providing if we are having to provide the system architecture for this project?
CGIS is the, is the committee.
Right, okay, well.
Tyler Technologies.
Tyler, I'm sorry, that's what I meant, Tyler, what is Tyler providing?
Well, we found, our last, our last meeting, we released him out of that contract. So the recommendation of the CGIS board, which I sit on, was to do it in-house. And the funds that are going to fund it is from the SPOSS, SPOSS dollars, Mr. Brookins. In that meeting, we talked about could you accomplish what the committee needs to be accomplished? And you said that it could be accomplished with additional personnel. Can you elaborate just a little bit on that?
Yes, sir, the current system that we're using, we, we developed in-house over the last thirty-five years. It's, it's evolved and changed since the beginning. This system would be written from the ground up in current technologies that existing staff who have to maintain the current system that we're using as long as we're developing it. And they don't have the skills to do that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, those in favor of I, I oppose, it's unanimous, thank you.
The next item is number eight, Budget Amendment four dash eleven, FYE six thirty, twenty nineteen dash twenty fifteen SPOSS.
Good evening Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I have two budget amendments, budget on item number eight is budget amendment four dash eleven for two thousand fifteen SPOSS. To amend the budget to recognize revenue for the cost of county wild SPOSS signal lighting, road resurfacing and sign production. The amount is one million, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. I would like to know if you could state for the record, is there a way that we can know specifically what roads? Because I, once again, have received information regarding some of the SPOSS projects that we may or may not be following certain rules or guidelines based upon what was provided to me. And I'm to the point now, I keep getting, you know, hammered about it. So I think we need to state what we spending money on, are we spending it on roads that have already should have been included? Have they lingered, these projects just have not been completed and finished? The reason I'm asking is for two purposes, one, because of the concerns I'm receiving from the citizens. And number two, we just went through the budgetary process, so.
This is for FY nineteen, this is, we're cleaning up, so we can close out.
You're cleaning in.
Excuse my voice, I'm sorry, so we can close out the fiscal year. And I, I don't have the exact roads that these were, that they were used for because it's signs, lighting, signal lights, as well as resurfacing and patching roads. I would have to go back and look through all the invoices to see, because this amount is just an amount that was in that line, those line items. But we would have to pull all the invoices for the whole year to see what that was. Or T and D could actually give us the information as well.
We can move forward, Mr. Chair, for now, for eight and nine collectively, but I do want to state for the record, moving forward.
We didn't, we didn't read.
Okay, when we do get to, because I do want to state for the record, there's a lot of projects that are delayed. And it's gotten to the point to where I'm just going directly to G dot to get advice and information. And again, I'm just trying to serve the public and if I can't answer it, I need to get the answers from y'all. And the projects are delayed while we spending more money. Even if you're cleaning it up, it should have already been in the budget. That's all, not to you, that's all.
Item number nine is budget amendment four dash twelve for two thousand nine.
Hold on, we haven't voted on it.
Okay.
Those in favor of I, I oppose, it's unanimous, next.
Okay. Item number nine is budget amendment four dash twelve, is two thousand nine sponsored fiscal year nineteen. To amend the budget for transportation and development salaries and benefits related to work performed on SPOSS projects. The amount is one million, four hundred fifty thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, any questions?
Just a statement again, I think we need to award people for their work and not have to keep going backwards. Even though it's a budgetary process.
A clarification, now this, this, the money was budgeted in the SPOSS funds, but what we do, we park, we set it in an account as for additional personnel reclassifications. Because what, we don't know exactly how many projects that T and D is going to work on the personnel. So we can't just automatically charge it to SPOSS, what we do at the end of the year, we clean it up and move it to the correct salary and benefits account, that's what this one is for.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So we're gonna start getting a matrix to know when these projects are completed and how long they take.
Well, if you would allow the CO to do so, again, only thing I'm, I'm gonna say, and you have every right being a commissioner, but let's make sure we don't, we're a policymaking board, let's make, let's make sure we're not getting bogged down too much in the operations.
I hear you, Mr. Chair, but it requires us to approve this money, that's the reason for my statement.
I said you have every right to know, I just made a statement. Those in favor of I, I oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item is number fifteen, Resolution twenty nineteen, one twelve.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and Board. Resolution twenty nineteen, one twelve is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia concerning tax credit finance family affordable multifamily projects to provide an effective data to this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any questions?
The only question I have is just to make sure that we're not leaving out, and I think it was addressed, the TODs, was transit oriented developments as well as the opportunity to be able to look at senior housing and that's all. And, uh, that's all.
Yeah, it does state that it does not include senior housing.
To, to me, this, this has been written so vague, um, and sometimes these items need to be taken on a case by case basis. I almost think we should table this.
Well, we passed that part, unless you wanna. Who, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
She made the motion.
Mister, uh, Commissioner, there, it, within the resolution, it does say, this, all you're doing is providing context. But that does not preclude you at any point or any develop, any person from coming and bringing. It's really limited to new construction of multifamily low income housing. And that doesn't, and you're making a general statement and saying that doesn't preclude anyone from coming and bringing a project to you if it's so fit. And you can still vote on that. You're just providing a general, general context.
Don't we vote on it anyway when they come before us in the zoning?
Thank you.
So why do we need language if we're gonna have the ability to turn it down from the start?
It's, um, really more to s- to help provide direction. So if people have to spend a bunch of time and money putting together projects and they have a sense of where they're going, they're gonna have to really kind of create something that's gonna be attractive for you all to vote on. As opposed to just bringing, you know, more, numerous kind of projects like this for you all to review and then ultimately turn down. If that's what your position is. This is really just setting forth a policy, um, putting people on, developers on notice, this is what the board thinks about these types of projects. If that's not something that the board wants to articulate as a policy, you don't have to.
Well, right, and if we, um, i- if those developers come to that individual commissioner, sim- very similar to zoning. And if that commissioner either agrees or disagrees, and then, you know, again, be brought before the board and all. But at least this gives us and the citizens some kind of indication as to how we would like to proceed. You know, it, it doesn't preclude this happening.
But a policy is making a statement saying we don't want it.
It just says it's disfavored, and it specifically says that.
What, what does disfavor mean?
It doesn't say.
It's not preferred.
Exactly.
Thank you, thank you. All right, any other questions?
It can go to the individual commissioner.
Any other questions, statements?
Uh, only statement I want to make is I feel that right now is the time that we really need to figure out a way to have a housing work session. Because not just with dealing with this ordinance before us, or this resolution rather, but also dealing with the fact that Clayton County is designated as an opportunity zone, as well as some other things in the market that's happening in the county with hedge fund groups coming in and buying up things. Now is the time for us to take a look at that collectively as a group and get ahead of it. Because else it's gonna be too late to play catch-up. So, um, I do agree with Mr. Chairman of the, of the ordinance being written, um, that it says disfavored. Although I do agree with the intent of the resolution. I feel there may be another way that we can address it. And so I do agree with, um, Commissioner Davis on that. But it does need to be addressed.
And a point that, uh, Commissioner Warner made about getting ahead of some things that are going on in Clayton County. As far as developers buying, not so much developers, but investors buying property, doing other things like Airbnb's, boarding houses, and some other things. I think we really need a discussion, a serious discussion, board.
But that's outside of this.
I, I know, but I'm just saying one thing can lead to another, and before we know it, we are going down the drain.
Any other questions? Those in favor of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, uh, aye. Those opposed? Nay.
Okay, so I have one.
I, I didn't hear everybody, so I don't know what the count is.
I think I'm the only I.
And it's not that it's not a I, I just.
I think we just need to.
I think we should have amended the, the, yes.
Well, we can have a discussion, right, exactly. I, I think it's something we really need to discuss and really discuss seriously.
So it's four to one, Hamburg was, uh, for it. So it fails, next.
The next resolution is twenty nineteen, one fifteen, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to terminate the intergovernmental agreement with the Development Authority of Clayton County for the promotion of economic development in the county, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense relating thereto, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Warner seconded the motion. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Three, two, it passes. Next.
The next is Resolution twenty nineteen, one sixteen, which is a resolution authorizing the Clayton County Board of Commissioners to remove certain board and authority appointees for violations of the Clayton County Ethics Code, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions?
Only question I have is I see that they're at the bottom of the agenda, agenda, if I could talk today. Are appointments, but this is authorizing for the chairman to terminate. But shouldn't there be a step in between those, or no?
No, that's why it's first.
That's correct.
But, okay.
What, if, if this does not pass, then the, uh, the, the remainder will.
Not come.
GHNI will not be necessary.
Right.
Okay, the only reason I'm asking, and it's because of what happened with the Economic Development Board. So for me, it's not quite still making sense. I know it will be passed. But even though we pass it, this ordinance, does it clearly state those names?
Yes.
Ordinance for that we can put on record, or you're not?
It's in, within the ordinance twenty, uh, nineteen sixteen, it states the names and sets out the, the whereas clauses as its explanation as to how it got to this process.
So for me, I would like to abstain from two of them. One of them I appointed, and, um, the other one I'm working with on something. So I want to. So I don't know how to accomplish that.
You're gonna abstain because you appointed somebody?
Well, not just appointed, but doing some work. I have a meeting to do something, do some work with them. So I don't want to vote on it. And so I gotta figure out, how can we? How can I?
So what's your cause for abstaining?
Well, in all of.
Go ahead. Uh, uh, hold on a second, uh, Mr. Ray, did you hear the question?
Uh, what, what's the purpose, I mean, what's the?
How does she abstain? Does she need to abstain with cause? And she said she might be doing work with somebody.
Is this like a, well, I don't?
I'm a part town commissioner, sir. I have to protect myself.
I mean, it, she'd have to provide something that shows there's some sort of a conflict or as a business relationship or something along those lines that would be raised to a cause, and she has indicated that she is doing work.
She said going to do some work.
I just have to state, I have to state it. I don't have, I've never had to produce a document before. I just have to make the statement. And there are two gen- two individuals that I want to be able to abstain from, if possible.
She wants to separate them out of them.
If possible.
Out of the resolution.
So to try to vote on two of the three.
I just don't think it's fair to the board to have to, to have to vote on all three together if we don't agree.
They are committed to the same infraction. So why wouldn't you want to vote on them all?
Well, well, since we're discussing.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we're talking about them, um, conducting the same infraction. I have contacted these three people, and they were not notified that they would be, uh, taken off these boards or whatever. True enough, uh, at least two of them did receive the letter. One person said they received the letter, but since they did not do business or whatever, to, um, contradict whatever on the letter, then they didn't send it back and all. I, I think, and then one person, uh, mailed their form back in, and then the second time walked it in, or whatever. And I provided that, um, form with the notarized date, and I believe it was June something, which was well within the time. Excuse me, and then one person said they did not receive. I think we should, again, and for your reason too, take this off and rethink it and all, and these folk have complied with what the requirement is as far as the ethics board is concerned.
So just for clarification, you said you want, brought in the disclosure report, uh, disclosure form.
Showing that it was notarized and all, uh, in.
So, so what I did, I wanted to be fair to all of the, uh, board members who failed.
Those people are volunteering, basically.
Uh, that's my point too. So you would think that they would go beyond, uh, above and beyond.
But they, they need to know. Somebody needs to notify them.
We notified them, we notified them in writing, we notified them, gave them extra thirty days to, uh, come into compliance. They failed to do so. But in reference to the disclosure r- report that you were talking about, I followed up on that. Again, I want to be fair to, to everybody, especially this young lady. And I went and spoke to the person who notarized that form. And he works for a banking institution, and he said he'd never seen this form before. And not only that, but he said that every notarized form and document that comes into the bank, they have to put it in their database. And there was no record of that database. I'm not saying that.
Let me say this, and to me.
I'm not saying that anything was wrong, or, or there's wrongdoing. I'm just saying what he said. And basically, uh, I think they're going to look.
Well, that person should come before us, or the ethics board, and they should be notified and have a chance to speak.
Who should be notified?
Who, whatever, three people, five people, or whatever, should get a chance to defend themselves. I mean, we're just going off of that form not being received. I think we should be, we should take a human stand here and say, okay, if these people are willing to serve, let's at least give them a chance to come before us and say, this is what happened, or this is what did not happen. And instead of just automatically taking, uh, a big step like this.
Chairman, what was the time span?
We can, this can really damage some of these folk professions.
How, by being taken off of, uh?
No, by having an ethics violation against them.
First notice went out in December. The first notice went out in December, they supposed to have it in by February.
I just think we should.
Missed the February dead date, uh, dead, deadline date. Next notice went out in July. No, June, I'm sorry, June, June, where we sent certified letters. Each of the people who received those certified letters returned it. Acknowledged and receipt of it. So if there was something not right, then why would you not?
Why can't they come before us?
Why would you not say, hey, something's not right, I submitted it, I got this letter, let me call the clerk and fill out a new one if I had to, cause it was clearly thirty days after.
Well, I think that's what happened with one of these people, uh, in the last couple of days. Once they found out they were gonna be taken off, or that there was an ethics charge against them. I, I believe we've been notified by all three people as to what has happened.
After the fact. It's, it's been a month after the deadline date, but I'm, I'm done with it.
Wait, one second. My issue is not that. My issue is because I have documented, as I stated before, I'm working on a millennials project, Junior Jackson, I actually used to be his educator, and I've been, um, speaking with Mr. Bell as well. Uh, we have a lot of young people that want to be involved. I'm not getting to their involvement here and what they responded to, what they didn't respond to. But I've already spoken to some of our city leaders about coordinating event in November for us to come together to hear from these millennials, and I need their help to make it happen. So that's why I asked, is there a way that we could separate them out? Because I don't want there to be any conflict of interest later. Be, I just want it to be clean as possible. That's simple as that.
So you're saying you don't want to vote to remove them, if that was gonna be your vote?
I just want to all.
Trying to coordinate help with them in November.
Mr. Chairman, I have to make sure that I keep myself in a place to where I can answer any questions and I can stand by me voting for anything. I just don't want us to have to vote on all of them together cause I have to answer those questions. That's all I'm asking for. And I have it documented. I don't want to list all the names, but they're a group of kids, but they're not kids anymore. But young people that I'm reaching out to, and it, and so that's simple as that. And in thinking about it, I just don't want to get caught up into having to answer that question.
Can we break them out individually?
Yes, I was gonna suggest that we can just, you can separate each three if that's what you'd like to do, Mr. Chairman. Um, given that she went, then she has two that she has raised issues about.
It's home for the holidays, to be specific.
The resolution will be the same, except they'll have individual names attached to them.
That's correct.
And we'll vote on them separately. And again, uh.
And then she can.
Her reason, she'll have to state her reason for.
I just stated it for them.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Her reason again for, uh, abstaining from the vote.
And that's correct. She'd have to state the basis for her, um, her reason for abstention.
Okay, so who's the first one?
The first one would be Junior Jackson.
All right, is there any other discussion on, uh, Junior Jackson?
Um, can my statement stand as before? Cause I really didn't want to make it as big. We've been working on this for two years. I just don't want any reason.
You've been working on what for two years?
Working with the millennial home for the holidays project, and reaching out to the millennials. That's all. And I need their help. So Junior Jackson is the reason I'm abstaining, Chairman. That's what you're. You asked me to state the reason.
I got you. Any other, uh, statements or comments? Here and now. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Nay.
Nay too, because this, we're voting just for Junior individually now, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Nay for Junior.
Okay, so that goes nowhere.
All right.
Next, uh.
Next is Eric Bell.
Mr. Bell is another one. We have a, I'm sorry, sir.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
I'll second. Questions, comments?
Same reason as I stated before, and again, because we had already scheduled a meeting to meet.
All right, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose.
One abstention.
Uh, Commissioner.
I said nay.
Okay, two, two, it goes nowhere. Next one.
Next is, the last is, uh, Emma Godby.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions?
Uh, well, it's not a question, but it's a comment. Um, Ms. Godby has served this county very well for years, and has always gotten her form in, which is what she has stated, that she got the form in, mailed it in the first time and all. And I think that should take some consideration and all. And, and you know what, you contacted somebody. Did you contact Ms. Godby?
Hmm, cause we searched the records.
Well, we, she needed to defend herself. If somebody said that this is what happened, then we should have taken it upon ourselves to contact her and say, this is what we received from the bank or whatever, and give her a chance to defend herself.
Well, the bottom line is the clerk never received anything, period, other than the receipt or acknowledgement of the letter. The bank, they do whatever they're gonna do, uh, cause they did allude to the fact that they probably gonna do an internal investigation in terms of that because it was a, uh.
Then why can't we wait until after the investigation?
Cause it's not my pr- it's not my, uh, desire to do so. And I, and I, and I, and I will say this, Ms. Godby has been a, uh, uh, good servant of, uh, Clayton County. So, but we gotta hold people to standards.
But if they're investigating, why can't we wait until the investigation?
We can't, we can't bend the rules for everybody, or, or even some people and not everybody.
Why can't we wait until the investigation is over?
Cause I'm, I'm not into that business. Either you're gonna be, you're either gonna conform, or you're not. It's a voluntary position. You should take it serious. And some people don't take it serious, cause it is a voluntary position. But that's just my position on that.
What if the investigation is done and they find out they made the mistake?
Well, do we, we still don't have the form. It was never sent to us.
But then we would have taken her off of board that she really enjoys serving on.
Duly noted. Any other questions? All right, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Three, two, it passes. Next.
That's the last of the items that were pulled apart.
Thank you.
The next item is item nineteen, oh, that was on consent, I'm sorry. The next items will be public hearings for zonings. On May seventh, the Board of Commissioners approved time limits on public hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. And each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation without the ten minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speakers are expected to immediately cease speaking and leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of the zoning decision items shall have no right for rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, or name of your organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Holding up signs, clapping, or yelling to show for opposition to a speaker will not be permitted. Show of hands or cle- plead, but a show of hands quietly standing will be permitted to show support for or in opposition of a speaker's position. The first item is a rezoning nineteen oh three, zero, zero, nineteen.
Applicant, please come forth. Or is it ours?
Sound the case and the conditions, recommendation, recommendations. The applicant, Kevin Edmondson, on the behalf of Purple Martin Group LLC, is requesting a rezoning for four parcels of land from RS, RS one eighty residential to GB General Business. This is for a com- This is for a commercial retail building. The subject parcels are located at the intersection of Boulder Crest Road and Anvil Block Road. The parcels, parcel numbers are identified on the agenda. The subject property consists of two point zero five acres of land, with two hundred and sixty-two feet of frontage on Boulder Crest Road, two hundred and ninety feet of frontage on Anvil Block Road. And there is a companion case, do, are we gonna sound these separately, or?
Are we able to take those together?
Okay. Companion case is for a future land use-
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Because we gotta have pu- public hearing for both, that's right.
Miss Mann, also, uh, Miss Chair, um, if you notice, you got on the agenda, that's District Two, that's actually in District One.
Yes.
Right, that's what's on, on my agenda, I apologize for that.
Were you finished?
Yes, I've sounded the first case.
Is the applicant here? Is the applicant here?
Chuck, can we go, we're just going to take a vote, they're not here?
Chuck, do we still have to ask for citizen input if, uh, the applicant is not here? Because they, they don't have the opportunity to rebut or anything, so I would think that either we can table it.
You, uh, you can table it, and if you want to hold a public hearing, if you want to hold a public hearing, it's just that you just do a vote. The next time, you won't have to do a separate public hearing. If you table it, then it can come back for a public hearing, it just had to be re-advertised and reset.
Or can we just take a vote?
I'd actually, yeah, or can we just take a vote?
Well, it depends, if you're just-
If we're gonna vote, I think we gotta have-
Okay, well, we go on and take public, because if people are here, and I don't want them to have to keep coming back, but this thing has been going on and on, so we can go on and-
So I should desire is to go ahead and have public hearing?
If you're gonna vote on the merits, then yes, you'll need a public hearing.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna enter into a public hearing, so is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of this project? Anybody wants to speak in favor of this request? All right, seeing no one, is there anyone who wants to speak against it? Come forward, ma'am.
Um, hello, my name is Alicia Bowler. I reside at forty-seven thirty-six Boulder Crest, which is about thirteen houses, um, on the same site that the land is. And I want to say that, um, as you acknowledged, this is my fourth time coming out, um, because the sign goes up and the individual doesn't show up. Um, my second thing is, when we think about a strip mall, which is what they were proposing, on Boulder Crest and Panola, there is a gas station there, and there's a police sign, because they have property available. On, across from Walmart, there's a Chevron, there's a police sign. On forty-two, across from the Family Dollar, there are several units there for lease. And if someone's looking for a new unit, right down after you cross over six seventy-five, there's a new, um, strip mall that has probably, I think, seven units there, and four of those are available. So there is ample place for someone to, um, get a, to lease a place if they're looking, plus in Henry County, Fervia's right there, and they have several places, um, for lease. So my point of bringing that up is that this is a residential area, and if a strip mall goes there, where most people in strip malls, they put things behind them when they want it to be out of sight. And so, I want you all to realize that, even though it may go behind that building, that's on the side of somebody's house, and it's a residential area. And I know none of you, nor myself, would want to rent a house, buy a house, lease a house, or anything that's on the side of a plaza when they have different things happening there. Plus, crime comes in. Since, uh, Allenwood, that little area wasn't even on the map. I mean, you could count the number of police come there. But since we have Walmart, the plazas next to them, all of them have been, um, robbed at some point since the Walmart has been there. So my point is that it brings crime. And I know that when Walmart wanted to initially come on the Henry County side, they fought, 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 and they end up coming on the Clayton County side, which we have Walmart. And you have to ask them to bring their baggage and stuff in, like in the strip mall. We finally got a place to serve alcohol. You go out now to go to the Family Dollar, and you have to get the glass out of the road to dodge for your parking. My point is, we can't call our police to ask them to clean up the strip mall. So since we can't do that, I'm asking you all, and they didn't think enough to come here, let's not allow anybody to come in and put strip malls in our area, where this is a residential area. And we want it to stay residential. We want our place to be a place that we can call home, and we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come forward, sir.
Mister Farmer, unincorporated Clayton County. Your words to me was, you can't make anybody recycle. But ne- nor have I heard you ask anybody to recycle. So before you allow anybody to come into this county to build some, make some, or whatever you want to call it, if they don't put recycling in their definition, then they need to be denied, so. Until that something happens, deny everything.
Anybody else? Commissioner Gregory? Oh, hold on, hold on a second. Do you have something, uh, Mister Garber? Did you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Come forward.
Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Again, this is a prime example of where business comes in conflict with residential people who were there first, where the property is already zoned for residential. And I am in support of the lady who got up here and spoke, and said about the garbage being in back of the, of businesses. You have to protect your taxpaying people who are the, who are the backbone of this county, and forget about what's in the, in the pie in the sky. Protect the people, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? Commissioner Gregory?
Mister Chair, um, I also think we, this area is just not ready for a little commercial, um, business area. And, you know, the citizens have expressed that they'd like to keep the commercial on the west side of, of Boulder Crest. So in this place, this little land right here, it is in a residential area, it's right next to two houses and so forth. I don't think it's a good fit. I, and with that, I'm gonna offer a motion to deny this particular zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, statements? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Mister Reed, is there a-
Well, it's on the air.
Do we need to go to the second one?
Yes, it's on the air.
Even though we turned down the first one?
It's two different pieces of land.
Okay. All right, let's proceed on.
Well, the, then, uh, B, you could conceivably change the land use map, even if you re- denied the rezoning, which is why you have to take them both second.
Not a problem. Miss Mann?
Yes, the, uh, the second companion case, the, uh, recommendation from the zoning advisory group was for withdrawal. The request number is FLUP one nine zero three zero 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 four. This is a request by applicant Kevin Edmondson, on behalf of Purple Martin Group LLC, requesting to amend the future land use map to change the designation from medium-density residential to general commercial. This is on four parcels of land located at Boulder Crest and Anvil Block Road intersection. The parcel ID numbers are identified on the agenda. Again, the ZAG recommendation was for withdrawal.
All right, so at this time, is there one, anyone want to speak in favor of this request? Anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak against? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Gregory?
Mister Chair, um, I offer the same motion to deny this zoning as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next.
Modification, one nine zero four zero zero three. The applicant, Wendy Brewer, on behalf of Adam Holmes, is requesting a plat modification to the approved planned unit development for the existing Spivey Village subdivision. The request is to reduce the front yard setback from thirty feet to twenty-eight feet for the development of a new single-family dwelling. The subject property is located at nineteen oh two Spivey Village Lane. The parcel number is identified on the agenda. This is recognized as, as lot number fifty-eight, consists of point eighteen acres. The property has frontage on Spivey Village Lane. This is in District Four. Staff recommendation is for, was for approval, ZAG recommendation is for denial.
All right, anybody want to speak in favor of this request? Well, wait a minute, is there applicant here? Is the applicant here? Anyone, Mister Davis, how you want to proceed?
Let's move forward with it.
Anyone want to speak in favor of this request? Anyone want to speak in opposition?
Uh, not in opposition, but I-
Hold on.
Okay.
Anyone want to speak in opposition? Come forward, please.
Good evening. Um, I'm speaking, um, in speaking to homeowners that's been living in the-
State your name, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Elaine Jefferson, twenty forty-three Spivey Village Trace, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In speaking to homeowners that has been living in Spivey, Spivey Village Active Adult Community for five-plus years, I felt compelled to assist in being a voice to unite and bring change for the greater good of the entire community. There are a plethora of changes on so many levels that requires our immediate attention and action. So many homeowners are, are tired of fighting and feel it's a losing battle. But we're here today. We believe the opposite and hope in the future that their minds will change as well. Today is just one hurdle out of many to jump to cross the finish line. When my husband and I purchased our home in Spivey Village a year and a half ago, we were sold by not only what we saw, but by an Adams representative that painted a picture in which I was able to visualize something beautiful and a great place to live. I remember the rep and I driving by the lake, and I asked about the green space, which triggered the question to the rep, how many more houses were Adams built because I liked the green space? Her response was not, not many more, which will allow more green space for the community. Well, since that time, houses have been popping up in every direction. I respect and appreciate that it's a business. However, the Spivey Village homeowners would like the same respect and consideration that Spivey Village is a community of people, um, human beings that have worked hard and saved all their lives to have an active, beautiful, safe, and quiet place to retire. The community is beginning to close in on the homeowners. There's not much green space left to create some of the amenities and perks, which was initially designed for Spivey Village Active Adult Community. We would like to try at this point to recoup whatever green space and land we can to beautify and create a safe, active community with the vision and creativity of the homeowners. The more homes, the more it would hinder current homeowners. It can diminish homeowners' value, um, due to houses sitting to be sold and prices compromised to sell. We are presently seeing this now. Land that has been cleared to build, had many trees cut lying on the property for almost a year, and is still there today, which is a hazard to the homeowners and the community. During the Labor Day holiday weekend, parking was atrocious, and the community looked like the parking at an amphitheater, just on a smaller scale. You are our leaders, and you're all we have, and we're grateful for that, um, that you are listening to our concerns and our plea. And see the big picture, to make a decision that will affect our community and our latter years, that we have worked so hard for. We only want what we deserve, and we're promised. Unfortunately, we can only try to salvage what, uh, we can to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Davis, oh, yes, ma'am, come forward.
Hi, my name's Patricia Allen. I live at eighty-five seventy Spivey Village Court in Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six. And my concern about the zoning and the housing, like they-
Speak, speak more into the mic, please.
My concern about the zoning and the housing that, um, they building there, the homes, when we first got there, everything was just beautiful, the homes was all, you know, coordinated. Now, you just see houses straight up, don't blend in with the other homes. They building them by, you know, ditches and, and, you know, wherever they can find a space now, they trying to build a home. And I'm asking that you would please, you know, don't allow that to happen in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mister Chairman, and the rest of the board members, I'd like to, um-
State your name for me.
My name is Willie Adams. I'm, I reside at eight five, uh, seventy, Spivey Village Court. And I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Allen just mentioned about the community. When we moved there, it was beautiful. We were informed that there were two more lots that were for sale. We purchased ours, our lot, we were really, uh, we were really excited about the community, but when we purchased our lot, basically, we did it because there were only two more lots available. And since that time, we've seen numerous of houses, uh, built. And it seems that, that the way they're building the houses, there's no consideration of even the person or the potential buyer. I have some pictures, if you will. Allow me to approach the bench to show you of a particular house that is built right in front of a sewer stream. When you walk out of your front door, you look directly into a sewer stream. And what surrounds the house is a ditch where the, where the water runs to the back, and it sets up. This, this is, um, this is the plural, I don't think this house ever sold, but I would like for you to see some of the pictures that I've taken of some of the houses that were put up there. There were several houses that were put right around, a little pond with a bunch of bushes there. There was one resident who said that there was a snake in his garage. So, could I share these pictures with you?
It's on your phone, sir, but if, what you can do is get our cards when you go out, and on the bottom of our cards, I, I know our mine, has my email address, and you can feel free to email us whatever pictures you feel appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much. But I would like for the board to consider-
And I've been through that subdivision in, back in April, when some of the citizens have come to me about this and, and seen it.
It's the plural, so, thank you, sir. Slowly down, please. Thank you.
Mister Garber?
Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Again, a prime example. The beginning people who move into the neighborhood want their neighborhood to continue to be improved or at least maintain the same levels. What drives people out and to ex, to live in other places, to the, other counties, is the decline within the neighborhood. You don't keep it up, you let builders come in and decline what's around them, and it drives those people out. Even, it says here, ZAG recommends denial of the plat modification. You have advisors telling you what should be done. Why have your advisors if you're not gonna listen to them? Thank you very much.
Thank you, is anybody else who wants to speak?
Michelle Bohannon, twenty thirty Spivey Village Drive. Um, I stay right next to one of the lots that's, that they want to build on and for me, it will be an easement for my neighbor to the left of me and the, the lot is in between us. And it's only a short amount spot because his mailbox is right there. And so there would be no room for any cars to park. And when they have something at the clubhouse, the traffic would be atrocious because there's so many cars be on that street. So I think we just need green space, we don't need to be building anymore.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Come forward, sir. Just take note that you have, uh, less than a minute to speak.
He had some time for that, Chairman.
And sir, I'm gonna give you a minute to speak.
My name is Paul Price and I live at twenty thirty-eight Spivey Village Drive. Uh, I've been there for a little better than a year. And we moved in there because of the basis that we had, because of where the houses were, and we loved it. But now what has happened is they are putting up houses now that the lots are just too small for them to put houses in. And they just go straight up. And that's what we are opposing. We don't want to have a house sitting beside us and, and the lot is full of grass now, it's about seven feet tall. And I call and ask them come and move it, cut it down or do something to it. I was because snakes, rats and everything else there. And it's right next to our house. And it ought for them to put another house in, that's not gonna look like the rest of it. It's gonna be just straight up, been there, I guess. And that's why I'm opposing.
Okay, your time is up, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
First of all, I want to say thank you everyone for coming out from Spivey Village. But I want to make a comment that we've got to begin to protect our citizens. I have a major issue when someone wants to do business in this county, but neglects the citizens to even show up for a public hearing. To me, it says, I want your money, but I don't want to live next to you. And we've got to begin to hold these businesses accountable for what they've put in, in the beginning, when they smiled in our faces and came to all these meetings. And, and for that reason, we've, I've moved that we deny this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any common statements? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next.
The companion case modification one nine zero four zero 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 four. The applicant Wendy Brewer on, on the behalf of Adams Homes is requesting a plat modification to the approved planned unit development for the existing Spivey Village subdivision. The request is to reduce the front yard setback from thirty-five feet to twenty-six feet for a new single-family dwelling. The subject property is located at the address of twenty thirty-fourth Spivey Village Drive, Jonesboro, Georgia. The parcel number is identified on the agenda. The lot is recognized as being lot one fifty-eight. The size of the property is zero point one five three of an acre with furniture on Spivey Village Drive. This is also District Four and the staff, and the zoning advisory group recommendations also for denial.
All right, is the applicant here? Is the applicant here? All right, is anyone want to speak in favor of this request? Anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Della Bryant. I reside in nineteen sixty-seven Spivey Village Drive, Jonesboro. I represent the community that just spoke previously regarding the lot that we discussed earlier is the same situation. The lot is too small for the houses that they're proposing to build. The value of the housing, our houses, that appear may go down and the sale of the house may be detained. Just like you denied the other one and I'm asking you to deny this one. We've been coming here since July and it's been table, table, table. And in September, I think it was September the fifth, it was finally denied by the zoning board. So I hope you at this panel will follow suit. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please come forward.
Hello, sir. Uh, my name is Vadehi Patel and I reside at eighteen eighty-five Spivey Village Circle, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh two three six. Um, I also, in accordance with the rest of the members of my community, feel the same reasons as to deny, um, further variances for this project. Um, but would also like to note that this same builder left these two plots and some other suspicious activities are going on in our neighborhood because they're selling from one builder to the next. And now in other lots, they have started building without permits. And so by the time we get to those lots and come here in October to fight the variances with those, that house will probably already be built and it's gonna take this whole entire civil litigation to even stop building. So these are the kind of practices that are going around in our neighborhood. So we want to kind of start, stop it at this point, so there is a precedence set in our community to stop this type of building and these types of activities to go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Davis.
Deny.
Our second motion. Any other comment statements, hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chair, not to get into operations, but I want to just note the last comment that was made. I hear the same concern in District Three, that we have folks that are coming in and moving forward. We've got to monitor that a little bit more because once again, we get the phone calls. And I just want to state that. Thank you.
Next.
Yes, petition number R E Z one nine zero seven zero zero two three. The applicant Raj Desay is requesting a rezoning of three parcels from L I Light Industrial to, to G B General Business for a eighty-four room hotel. The subject property is located at the corner of Forest Parkway and Highway eighty-five, which is further described with the parcel numbers that are identified on the agenda. The subject property has approximately two point nine acres of land with three hundred and fifteen feet of frontage along the Clark Howell Highway and a hundred and ninety-two feet of frontage along Highway eighty-five. This is located in District Two. The staff recommendation is approval conditional, the ZAG recommendation is also approval conditional. We have nine condition items that I could read into the record.
Yes, please.
Yes, the first condition, the property should be limited to a eighty-four unit hotel and, and accessory ancillary uses. A minimum of forty percent of the structure shall be constructed of brick, granite, stone, marble, terrazzaio, architecturally treated reinforced concrete slabs, either fluid or with exposed concrete aggregate, insulated window and wall panels or stainless steel, porcelain treated steel, anodized or other permanently finished aluminum shall be provided on the structure's facade. Walls visible from the roadways or parking areas shall be incorporate changes in building materials varying wall offsets and other architectural features every one hundred linear feet. All rooftop equipment shall be screened from public view by parapets, dormers or other screens. The average height of parapet shall not exceed fifteen percent of the height of the supporting wall and should not at any point exceed a height equal to thirty percent of the supporting wall. Chain link fences shall not be visible from any public street. Burglary bars, steel gates, metal awnings and steel roll-down curtains are prohibited on the exterior of the structure, except in the structure's rear. Vending machines, paper stands and other similar devices must be located within a building. The area labeled on the site plan as green space reserved for future development shall be developed and maintained with sod, landscape, planets and hardscape features until such time the site is approved for development. Access shall be subject to the approval of the Department of Transportation. That's the non-recommended conditions by staff and the zoning advisory group.
All right, is applicant here? Is the applicant here? Please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is John Azar. I'm at sixteen ninety-five Virginia Avenue, College Park, Georgia. Let me say first that, uh, we enjoyed working with Madeline Spann and her, her plane department. She helped us through this whole process and, and she was invaluable to us. I just want to comment on that. This is what we proposed, I hope you can see it. Uh, we're planning an eighty-one to eighty-four unit comfort suite, uh, hotel, five stories. Uh, right now, the tax base on this property is three acres, been sitting there for the last hundred years. It's for under six hundred thousand dollars. This, this structure will exceed nine million dollars, so we gonna increase the tax digest by quite a few, few dollars. It's in an industrial section, uh, it's right there at the intersection Highway eighty-five, the old Clark Howell Highway and what's now Forest Parkway.
And I should ask you before you start it, do you want to reserve any minutes at the end for rebuttal for anybody who might be upset?
I don't, I don't think there's gonna be anybody here proposing this.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Azar from the, uh, board members?
Uh, yes, one, um, on here it says eighty-four units and you said eighty-one to eighty-four.
Yeah, we're proposing eighty-one, but we could go up to eighty-four, but right now, this, this project is eighty-one.
Okay. And I would like to add one other condition, that it not be an extended stay. Hotel.
I'll add that, Commissioner.
Okay, is there anyone here where you finished, Mr. Azar? Anybody here want to speak, uh, in favor of this? Come forward, sir.
Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. To move from zoning light industrial to general business is a fit. It works in this area. There's no impact on community and it, it utilizes the land. I speak in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor of? Please come forward.
Uh, Rob Leatherwood, uh, unincorporated Clayton County. I am in favor of this, I was wondering if there could be a clarification in the resolution description. It says that they want, uh, two eighty-four room hotels. But if I hear correctly, it's one.
Ms. Spann.
Yes, for clarification, the, the original request was, was for two, but it has been modified. There's only one planned hotel in this area here. The area left here is gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a green space area that, that the condition recognizes as being for landscaping and hardscapes. So there's no proposal for a hotel at this time. The applicant understands that there is intent to develop one in the future, that this, based on these conditions, he will be required to come back to the board.
And another question, I know like in the past, we had a Red Roof Plus that wanted to come to the county and unfortunately that was denied. And one of the statements made at that time was certain commissioners wanted a, a Hilton or Marriott. Uh, but at this time, I haven't heard any of those commissioners making any similar requests or statements as far as the type of hotel, uh, that will come in. Uh, but ultimately, I think there's already a Comfort Inn Suites next to it, uh, so I don't see an issue with having another hotel in the area. Uh, but it's just interesting that I have not yet heard the same concerns on this hotel as we did from the Red Roof Plus debacle that happened a few years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? All right, anybody want to speak in opposition? Come forward, please.
Mr. Farmer, unincorporated Clayton County. Again, my recycling. Eighty-four or eighty-one room hotel, you didn't say nothing about that. Why under these condition things you can't put in there, I will ask the person that want to build if they would recycle. So then this is on Highway eighty-five, if they don't do that, what about the trash of at least eighty-one, uh, residents that are coming there to live? You still don't ask this question, this should be under that condition. Ask them what they recycle says, you said you can't make them.
Anybody else?
Cyrilus Hathaway-Williams at seventy-eight thirty-four Sugarland Drive, Jonesboro, three zero two three six. I see a lot of abandoned hotels on eighty-five. Why can't we tear some of those down and build a new one in that place? It's time for us to look up, not just to buy, build something to have some rooms. A lot of people come here to Clayton County because they can buy a house cheap. We need to move our standards up. We need real deal hotels here. Because where is the trafficking coming at, human trafficking? Right there off of eighty-five at the airport. Let's stop building them a home where they can put our children in.
Anybody else? Commissioner Hambrun.
Um, yes, um, thank you, Mr. Azar, for bringing this to us. I'm thankful and glad that we will have a reputable hotel in the area that, um, can sometimes take over the, uh, excess of the airport when, if airports shut down or things happen, that people can now come to Clayton County for a decent hotel and all to stay, so we can get those, uh, sales tax dollars and all. Along with the conditions and all, with the inclusion of not an extended stay, well, I recommend, um, approval.
Mr. Azar, did you agree to all those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, comments? Yes.
Are we gonna, can we define what those, some of those extended stay brands are, do, are they all up under one umbrella?
I've never seen a Comfort Inn extended stay, but I just wanted to put that on record.
Well, even if they have the name, they, I mean, however they choose to operate and with this condition, um, feel comfortable that it would not be extended stay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next.
Next item, modification one nine zero eight zero 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 six. The applicant Mohammed Mark, Markani, on behalf of Sunrise Builders Inc., is requesting a zona modification from an approved planned unit development to allow two soccer fields, that was been modified to two, and fifty-seven single-family fee simple townhome units, a car wash and a restaurant on a commercial out parcel. The subject property is located along the east side of Highway eighty-five, just south of Point South Parkway, adjacent to the Fayette County line. Property, uh, parcel ID is described on the agenda. The property is eighteen point twenty-two acres in size and the, it has fourteen, one thousand four hundred and four point six feet of frontage on Highway eighty-five. This is District Three, Commissioner Warner. With the, uh, staff recommendation and ZAG recommended approval conditional, there are eleven conditional items to be read into the record. The first condition, the use of the property shall be limited to a car wash with interior ancillary oil change service, restaurant at a minimum floor area of seven thousand square feet, fifty-nine single-family attached townhomes and two soccer fields. Provide a minimum of one car garage with seventy percent of those garage units having, having one car garage and the other percentage not having garages. Provide one parking space per ten, ten townhome units for visitor parking. Provide thirty parking spaces for soccer fields as shown on the site plan. Parking lot must meet the requirements of the, of six point three two parking standards and also must meet the landscaping requirements of the code. Provide a landscape entrance with a signed entry monument identifying the townhome development. Front year and side, front, rear and side yards of. Front yard and side, front rear and side yards of each townhome unit shall be sitted in areas where land disturbance occurs. Outside hand washing of vehicles is prohibited. All homes must have front facades constructed with thirty percent brickstone or hard coat stucco or a combination thereof, with the remaining facade consisting of hardy plank and other accent materials excluding, of course, the garage doors. Provide a hundred percent solid screening of fencing and/or vegetation between the commercial restaurant and the adjacent townhome development. Not more than ten percent of the townhome units shall be used for rental units, and these, and there should be some space provided for a community garden. That concludes the eleven recommended conditions by the zoning advisory group.
All right, is the applicant here?
There it is.
State your name for the record, and before you proceed, would you like to save any minutes at the end for rebuttal?
Yes, if there is any, um, if there's anybody against it, then I'd like to respond.
How many minutes would you like to reserve?
Two.
Two it is.
Uh, my name is Carol Maker. I'm for Sunrise, I'm here representing Sunrise Builders. Good evening, everybody. Uh, first, I want to say that our office is located in Henry County on Highway one thirty-eight in Jonesboro, and I am also a resident of Henry County of twenty-six years. I'm gonna pass this out, this might give you a better... We're requesting a, um, a modification to an already existing PUD on Highway eighty-five. Um, it was approved several years ago. It's where the Lakeview Apartments are, and there's land in front of the Lakeview Apartments at front on eighty-five. We're proposing fifty-nine townhome units, two soccer fields, a car wash with, um, an oil change, no hand washing on the, you can't go in and do it yourself. It's all gonna be manned and have operating hours. And we're also, um, requesting an area for a restaurant space, either one restaurant, if we can find an acceptable, I guess, operator, or maybe a couple of restaurants that will provide it, be provided in the same space, maybe two separate buildings that would be able to maybe provide ice cream, or a coffee house, or a small breakfast, or something that can kind of bring community together. We were in front of ZAG last month. Couple of things, um, that we do have some, um, we went back and forth on was garages. Um, we had proposed fifty percent of the units to have one car garage. If you look, um, at the drawings of the townhomes or the facades, doing garages in seventy units, it kind of aesthetically isn't as pleasing as we would like the buildings to be. Um, so we would like to stick with the fifty percent. The other thing is, they had requested us to do one parking space for every ten units for visitors. We were only able, there's fifty-nine units that would require six, we were only able to fit five in there. And so we're hoping that that would be okay from that standpoint. Um, community garden, we've gone back and forth on. We would rather not do the community garden and just leave that as green space. And I think everything else we were, we were okay with. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
All right, so just for clarification, the changes that you would like to see in the recommended condition, recommended conditions, was the fifty percent, go back to fifty percent and not seventy?
Correct.
No community gardens?
Correct.
And what was the third?
The, just I want to be, oh, the parking space? We got, they're requiring, they requested six, it would be five point nine. We can only fit five in that cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And just the ability for the, um, the restaurant area, either one, or if we could do two, freestanding with outdoor sitting, just depending on what we can, we just want it to be a place that is gonna stay open and be a, you know, a community. And we're talking to some people, but I just want to reserve the right until we finish those talks.
All right, is there anybody here want to speak in favor of this?
Evening, Rob Leatherwood, Clayton County. Um, I think it sounds great, looks good. I wanted to just to make sure there's some clarification on the wording that was presented in the agenda for tonight. So it said restaurant slash retail commercial out parcels, but if I heard correctly, there will be no retail. Right?
It's in the stipulation.
Okay. I'm just reading off what was printed on the Agenda Mod description, uh, to make sure there's no confusion. Um, and then the other thing with it, as far as the o, the overlay, um, where did that sit exactly on the map pertaining to the existing, uh, Lakeview Apartments that were behind it? So are they able to pull that back up for residents to see?
Okay, so what's your question?
Uh, so is that, if I understand, is that's a lake that's right there behind there?
Yes, that's the lake.
Um, so what, um, what measures or precautions is the builder gonna put in place, uh, so that that lake is protected, uh, and that there's no unnecessary runoffs, or, um, are they creating a green space around that lake, uh, for wildlife, for residential viewing? Um, I didn't see anything mentioned on that. And the, uh, one of the conditions, just kind of understanding, uh, mention number seven, outside hand washing of vehicles is prohibited. Is that strictly related to the operating of the car wash, or the residents who want to wash their own cars in front of their own townhomes?
Can you advise on that, Ms. Spann?
That relates only to the car wash location, the out parcel where the car wash would be occupying.
And wouldn't for the residents that fall under our current code of ordinance?
In order, residents, there, there is no limitations unless the covenant's restricted, but according to zoning, there's no limitations on, on hand washing or washing your car in your own driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come forward, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners. Judith Bennett, Unincorporated, Clayton County. My question is somewhat of a piggyback, I'm just wondering if environmental testing was done. Again, there, there's, um, mention of interior ancillary oil change service, so where is that, uh, being monitored so that there is no runoff towards the homes, nor towards the soccer fields, nor towards the restaurants and, and such? So, um, that becomes basically a question, was the environmental testing done so that there is known where, where things are going to fall, where, and, uh, as far as the water and such? And, and I'll leave anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of? All right, in opposition of, anyone want to speak in opposition? Come forward.
Mr. Farmer, Unincorporated, Clayton County. If I didn't miss what she said correctly, she comes from Henry County. I would ask her...
She said it wrong. Yes, I pulled it up.
Proceed on, sir. Proceed on.
I don't know, she, she, she lost me in, in what, uh, Commissioner Warner was saying.
I'm sorry.
She says she come out of Henry County. I would ask, does Henry County have recycling in their program? And still, under these conditions, would you ask her, was, would they be willing to recycle, because it looks like a lot of stuff going on? And I would ask her, she said something about fifty-nine units and ten percent of them, what is ten percent of fifty-nine to her? And also, I, I missed it on the last point, that, that came out of Mrs. Hambrich's area, and they said Rivendell has recycling, but she voted down for the rest of the county to have recycling. And I would like to know why that is too. And ask this lady, would she be willing to put recycling in her thing to pick up trash and everything, 'cause that Clayton Beautiful is not working, at least for me.
Anybody else? Ma'am, at this time, if you want to come forward.
Okay. So to address around the, the pond, there's a hundred and fifty foot undisturbed buffer around that lake. Um, and that's where also the, um, soccer fields are. So there isn't any real building, or it's gonna be mostly, it's all green out towards that part. And the oil, from that standpoint, there's regulations, they have to go into barrels and be sent back, um, and protected that way. So, that's where we stand.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Warner.
I did look it up, because I always get the question. I'm not sure if you realize, the Sunrise Builders, you're located in Henry, just to answer the question, you said Henry, but I pulled it up, it's Clayton.
Oh, yeah.
Please give clarification, if you don't mind, 'cause I'm all about getting things right on record. When you first stated, you said you lived in Henry, and the built, the business was in Henry, and I get that.
Our, our business is in Clayton County on one thirty-eight, and I am a resident of Clayton County. I live in unincorporated Rex, so, in Clayton County. I'm sorry, I have, um, a lot of allergy medicine going on right now.
That's okay.
So I apologize.
And the only reason I asked for that, I anticipated the questions, 'cause I do that, get that question a lot. Um, but first of all, I want to say this, thank you for not bringing another apartment to us. Thank you for working with us on bringing forth this, what's gonna be a nice, what I hope to be a nice mixed-use development. I do, um, agree with the ZAG chairman. Uh, however, I will say that for item number one, because we have had some discussions about bringing in a reputable restaurant in there, we do want to give the flexibility for those negotiations for item number one, so I would like for us to be able to remove the stipulation that states that it has to remain as one seven thousand square foot unit. I'm not opposed to, um, dividing it up if needed, if the, um, potential reputable businesses come in. Um, there are a lot of restaurants that are choosing to look at Clayton County, such as what we've heard of there in Jonesboro, but slutty vegan, it is a restaurant, sorry. But they don't require as much space, so we want to give you that flexibility to negotiate. Also, to provide a minimum of one car garage for seventy percent of the townhome, that's not in line with industry standards, so I'm gonna ask that to be modified to fifty percent townhomes of garages, 'cause they alternate, they do alternate one or the other. It's gonna look real funny if you have some with garages and units, and then a few without. It needs to be consistent and uniform. Um, those are the two modifications I'd like to make, and there was one other, quick one, I don't know.
It was number three.
What was the third one again?
Parking spaces, the five, they're requiring one, five point nine, we can only fit five in that cul-de-sac.
And, and that, I'm okay with that, because again, industry standard is the folks that are interested in these homes are working individuals, and, um, so, um, I'm, I'm good with that as well. That's it. That's my recommendation.
And you agree to those stipulations? Do you agree with those stipulations that she outlined?
Yeah, we just need to address the community garden.
Uh, no, on the community garden, because we're building the new Flint River facility, which is not too far from there, which will have a community garden. Um, so I don't feel the need to do that. I think that the soccer field, that's gonna bring in a nice bit of business, so that will allow for, um, some recreation, um, as well, so I'm okay without having that. And, um, I think that's about it.
So you're taking the community garden now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Chairman. Go with all those, yes.
I think it might be also clear, uh, make it a little more clear to modify seven to say that outside hand washing of vehicles prohibited by car wash?
Yes.
So that way, there's no confusion that we're requiring or limiting residents from washing their vehicles outside.
And I think it's important for us to state that the car wash, I don't know if we have to put it in stipulations, but we discussed the fact, it's not one of those open bays that gets stuck, it's one that's stuck in the community, it's one where you drive it in, you get your car washed, and you get your, um, oil changed at, in the service.
I could reread the modified conditions if you'd like for the record, just to modify it.
Please do.
Condition number one, the use of the property shall be limited to a drive-through car wash with interior ancillary oil change service, restaurant or restaurants, fifty-nine single-family attached townhome units, and two soccer fields. Condition number one, it's the modified language. Condition number two, has modified language, to provide a minimum of one car garage for fifty percent of the townhome units. Subject to any required variances, but no variances will be required, we could strike, strike the, um, subject to any required variances, and it'll just read fifty percent of the townhome units will have one car garage. That's condition number two being modified. Condition number three will be, be modified, it says provide six parking spaces for the townhome units, visit, for visitor parking of the townhome units. Be the modified language for number three?
Five, five.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, provide five parking spaces for visitors for the townhome units. The next modification would be, would be condition number seven. Condition number seven shall read outside hand washing of vehicles is prohibited on the car wash out parcel. The, there will be striking condition number eleven, so that would be deleted from the set of conditions, and we now have remaining ten conditions, uh, suggested.
All right, I make that motion as read.
Before you go, Commissioner, can I ask a question? Who owns the, um, the softball fields? Who will...
That's a good question. Maybe we went over that though, but, good question.
I mean, the soccer fields, who will own it?
Um, it's, it's gonna be a business, they're gonna be privately owned. We're negotiating with a trainer right now that trains, um, youth for, um, teams that go on to the Olympics and state, you know, and, and, um, what's the word? I am so sorry. You know, just higher level of competition, and that go on to, who want to go on to the Olympics.
I got you. And, and also, even with the car wash, is that someone you've already got on board?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Where were we at?
You might make the motion.
You made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Probably moot and second, any other questions? Here and now, those in favor of aye. Opposed?
Uh, just one quick note, we're also accomplishing the fact that we won't have any investors buying up these homes, throwing off our FHA ratio in item number ten. Thank you for that.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, the next of board appointments for G and H, I think we need to...
No, the only one we have is aye. And that's the appointment to the Tourism Authority, this appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Emma Godby. The term will begin immediately and will expire on September first, twenty twenty-two. Are there any recommendations?
I move, we, Linda Browning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Three, two, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, I know that G and H were not, 'cause can we pull them or table them or do something?
No, 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 there is no need to proceed with them.
They're not vacant. The, G and H are not vacant, so we can't appoint someone to those positions.
I didn't want to appoint them, I just want to table, but that's okay.
There's no need to table them, because they're not, they're not vacant.
There's no need for that. Right.
Can we postpone executive session, sir?
Nope.
To next meeting.
Is there, uh, do we have executive session?
Yes, just on real estate and litigation.
Are we? We have a, uh, recommendation to go into executive session for real estate and litigation.
The real estate item, do we have to take it?
Uh, madam, madam. Please.
I'm asking you, Chairman.
Hold on, we got a motion. Is there a motion to go into executive session for litigation and real estate?
And personnel.
And personnel. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Uh, second to motion. Is there a question that you want to add some references?
No, sir, no question. Thank you.
All right, those, uh, in favor of going to executive session, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. And I see we have Councilwoman Neat Robinson in the back from the City of Stockbridge, it's good to see you. All right, motion to reconvene.
Oh, motion.
Is there a second? Uh, second, those in favor of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, Mr. Staffer.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, we're asking that you, um, consider, on the request of the Information Technology Department and HR to bring in the CEGIS positions at a higher step in grade. The positions in question is the software architect at a pay grade thirty-three fifteen, started posting salary at ninety thousand eight sixty-eight thirty-eight, and four software developers at a pay grade twenty-nine nine, posted salary sixty-nine thousand one thirty-eight eighty-three. We act... We ask that you consider this recommendation.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Uh, second to motion, any questions? Here and now, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Good night.